On July 12, 2022. Please rise and pledge allegiance, all by movement.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to your republic, our which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to be seated. I have no proclamation but presentations. We'll move on to item five, which is public auditions, communications and public participation. Any subject from the jurisdiction from the town council with a two minute limit. If you're in the public, you can approach the front table. Otherwise, if you are online, you can either get star nine or raise hand function. All right, go on once. Going twice. All right, we'll move on to item six, which is public hearing items. So we have 6.1, which is consideration of a resolution for bringing $750,000 for purchase of a fire rescue truck, appropriate $140,000 for resurfacing track, appropriate $115,488 for lawnmower acquisition, and appropriate $191,878 for the ADA walkway improvements and authorizing issues throughout the 1.197, 336. Bonds and notes, the financing appropriations. Here's the summary, so I don't know if Brian, do you want to add anything to that agenda item before we open the public hearing?
I know this is all done prior to my arrival, but it seems that it was already pre-proposed in the CIP plan for 2022.
Thank you, Brian. So that's, I would entertain a motion to open public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
So move by Council, Murray, second by Councilor Luba, since we do have folks online. We'll start from my left to right, so Councilman Green.
Hi.
Ms. Sherry.
Hi.
Councilor Luba.
Hi.
Councilor Yudichak.
Hi.
Councilman Uchio.
Hi.
And I as well, so the public hearing is now open. There's anyone from the public that would like to ask any questions. If you're in council chambers, you can approach the table. Otherwise, if you are on Zoom, you can get star nine, raise hand function. All right. Just going over the rules again, just to make sure, because then also you had a bulk hearing, so seeing no comments, I would entertain a vote.
I'm sorry, before you close, I just wanted to put on the record that we did have two emails come in regarding this public hearing item, both of which were in support of the ADA walkways. And I did deliver the emails to Lisa as our clerk, and per our procedures, they will be included in our minutes.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right, so I'll say one more time. Seeing no public participation, I would entertain a motion to close the bulk here.
Also move.
So my councilor, councillor Luba, is there a second?
Second.
Second, my councillor Murray. Do a roll call vote again, Councilmember Murray.
Hi.
Vice Chair Regan.
Hi.
Councilor Luba.
Hi.
Councilman Yudichak.
Hi.
Councilman Uchio.
Hi.
And I, so that is unanimous, the public hearing is now closed. Is there any further discussion on the hearing item? Any questions from council members? All right, seeing that, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution as outlined in 6.1.
Also move.
So my councillor Luba. Second, my councillor Murray. And yeah. And we'll do another roll call vote, so Councilmember Murray.
Hi.
Vice Chair Regan.
Hi.
Councilor Luba.
Hi.
Councilman Yudichak.
Hi.
Senator Uchio.
Hi.
And I, so that is unanimous. One to seven A reports of boards and committees responsible to the council. Councilmember Murray, any updates for verge brood?
No.
All right. Move right on to seven B reports of town council liaisons. Councilmember Murray.
Last night was agriculture, which I missed during an executive session, otherwise no.
But she again, nothing to report this week. Councilor Luba. We had the planning and zoning, which was last night, which again, I missed as well because of our executive session. Also for the Veterans Recreation Commission that they did meet. That I was unable to attend at their special session, but that there was discussion about, and I believe approval of moving forward with the Eagle Sound programs to, we have the Crandall Park gazebo, and then also to move forward with the request to name that as the Talon Veterans Memorial. That that's in the works right now, and I refer anybody else for any other questions to the match.
Thank you, Councilor Luba, Councilman Yudichak.
Yeah, so I missed last night's recreation advisory meeting as well due to the executive meeting. Mental health task force did meet a few weeks ago. Hold on, consultants, Wayland consultants came out, introduced themselves, and they might be doing some sort of needs assessment. They have provided a quote, but that hasn't been discussed yet with the mental health task force. That's going to happen, I guess, at the next meeting. Then, met a few weeks ago as well, hold on, I'm just getting down to those notes. We discussed the spreadsheet, we've decided to put all the items into different categories, either as a hold or no or a cancel, just so we can keep up with what we're working on. I won't go into too many details unless Tammy wants to jump in on that. That next meeting is going to be a special meeting, which is going to be on July 27th. And then, I believe, the mental health, not mental health, I'm sorry. Okay, inside with that, on June 16th, the Commission of People with Disabilities met. They discussed the town doing an ADA assessment. Obviously, we talked about the joint meeting that we were having with the Historic Commission. That was before we met, did the joint meeting. And then, future ideas and present, presentations that discussed inclusion in classrooms, and also better way to get information out to the community on what the Disability Commission is working on. And Tammy and John, if I missed anything, please jump in. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Yudichak. Councilman Uchio.
Okay, I had a few, I had a few meetings, I had a permanent celebration meeting. We discussed the possibility of doing something on the green for the Fourth of July, which they decided against. We're looking at our quest that has been made by another committee member to create a Founder's Day on May 12th in recognition of a talent adult and youth to be recognized as, you know, a notable Talander. Still can't wrap my mouth around Talander, just sounds weird to me. We're moving our August meeting because we wouldn't have had a quorum. Don't have a date yet, but that will be a special meeting announced. And I'm really amped about this, but we were really starting to talk about the Harvest Fest and expanding it this year to conversation that Mary Pat and I had a couple of years ago regarding the scarecrow piece of it. And last year, we did a little, they did a little more expansion on having the food and the vendors, the people who put up scarecrows go. So this year, we're looking at expanding it even more and closing off part of the road, having food trucks, trick or treating and stuff like that. So I'm really thrilled about that coming to fruition this year. So there's going to be a lot of meetings to focus in on what we're going to be doing with the Harvest Fest. Couple other little logistic things from that, but nothing too big. That was it for permanent celebration. I also had an Eastern Highland Health District meeting. They're going to start doing their inspections of salons and stuff like that again. And there was some contention around some legislation, old legislation, I guess, that requires hand sinks at every station. So trying to kind of work around that. Let's see, apparently they're like 10-year-old standards. So we talked about the contaminated well issue. And by their records, Talon has 78 of the 145 contaminated wells in the Health District. They're looking at setting up some new products. They're looking at some new environmentally friendly possible products, what something that they're calling a salty mulch. Not quite sure what that is, but I know Colleen and I made that face too, I was like salty mulch. But okay, let's learn about it because it's better than dumping sand, the salt. So had a quick update about monkeypox and the Powasian virus, a tick-borne illness that is much quicker to catch than Lyme. So to remind people to be on the lookout, put up your, whatever it is that you're doing there, make sure you're covered for tick, for tick bites. And also, they have a youth suicide advisory board that they're required for the Health Department to get trained on this. In question, persuade and refer to identify youth who are in crisis. They're going to be determining the eligibility criteria to establish the training. Once they have their training, they're going to be coming out to the towns to do the QPR training there. It's like a train the trainer thing. They're going to be notifying all the stakeholders when that training will be available. So I think we should definitely get the task force involved with being notified when that training comes through. I'm sure, I think Maureen will probably, and Bev will probably get the notice first. That was about it for Eastern Highland Health District. And then, from the ARPA, as, as Colleen noted, we just kind of went through and classified some things that do not qualify for ARPA spending and will be removing them from the reports. And then, we talked a little bit more about the community clinician program and doing a needs assessment for the whole community. And the forest management. So we had a couple of other ideas, things that were kind of firming up that were on there, but I think Colleen got the majority of it. And I think that is it for me this month, because that's clearly not enough.
All right, thank you, Councilor Uchio. And then myself, there is a slight loss for confirmation on the 23rd at Stopworth. They talked a little bit in regards to the contaminated water issue about possibly doing some studies of rooks and streams that flow through trails and trying to compare near roadways to deeper in the trails, water issues. But otherwise, on the 12th and the 14th, they have a meeting where they're bringing on several members, getting them updated on the process and electing their chair, vice chair and secretary. So very exciting, they're glad they're nice full stock and everybody up and running. So that was it for me. So we'll move on to item eight, which is new business. 8.1 is consideration of a resolution to authorize a Talon Lily to have two scoreboards installed at River Park. I don't know if, I don't think I see anybody online for Talon Lily. I don't know, Bruce, if you're able to speak for them at all, if there is recreation, give me additional information, otherwise I let Brian take it away.
I know that this is for, obviously scoreboards up at River Park, I think it's a great addition. Lisa has a fund set aside for the 1600 that'll cost ever source for it. I don't have anything else to add, Bruce, you have any?
Pressed approximately 4.5 by the Talon Little League. And I agree, it'd be a great addition to the field. I think it's had a major league deal when you're playing with a scoreboard out there, so.
Yeah. And then, I think the only other question I had, I think Brian might be able to have covered it, but encumbrance. You indicate a technical issue.
No, go ahead.
I say it was an encumbrance, that was where the funds are coming from, right?
Yes.
Okay. Were there any other questions from council members about item 8.1?
What is that, I'm sorry, what does that mean, it's an encumbrance? Purchase order?
Go ahead.
So Lisa needs to explain.
Because this was happening last fiscal year. We thought it was going to happen before the end of the fiscal year. We had, the order was going to be put in place, so we put a purchase order in place to order the services.
Okay.
But we can always, if you decided not to approve them, putting this on there, we can always change it. So it was paid for out of last. It's not, it's not paid for, but the money is in a purchase order set aside, and it'll be charged to last year when it actually comes through. Got it, sorry.
I'm all set. Oh, thank you.
So what, what fund pays for it?
I think I took it out of contingency. I have to go back and see, but I try to look where I had funds available and cook it out of there.
Okay, thank you. Those were my questions, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, are there any other questions from council members? Seeing that, I entertain a motion to approve resolutions outlined in 8.1.
So moved.
Second.
Second, my councillor Luba. Seeing no further discussion, we'll do a roll call vote, so Councilmember Murray.
Hi.
Vice Chair Regan.
Hi.
Councilor Luba.
Hi.
Councilman Yudichak.
Hi.
Senator Uchio.
Hi.
And I, so that is unanimous. Move on to 8.2, which is a consideration of a resolution to authorize the town manager to submit a steep application to the Office Policy and Management. I believe this is for the tennis courts, but Brian, do you want to add anything to?
That is the, thank you, that is a small time, I got my assistance grant up to 500,000. We should be taking advantage of all that. It's suggested or recommended 20% match, we're at about just under 17% match. At this point, it's not anticipated that that should be as much of a problem, but this will all be to either a resurface some tennis courts and absolutely that would place some tennis courts as well. That is in some cider mill road courts, down by Crandall's and the old Capo Road up by the high school.
Thank you. And we have received a number of emails in the past several months about the safety hazards. So it's probably an ideal project to put that forward, but are there any other questions from council members?
So this is just the application, we're not necessarily allocating money or deploying money to the program. Yeah, we're just going forward with the application for these funds. And then, when they're based upon what, what if anything we get, we'll go forward with it.
Fingers crossed, yes. All right. Yeah, I think other than, we have the, I think it's 85,000 capital recovery plan for year, for year two. Yeah, so that hasn't been allocated yet, but it's in the plan. So that's where that 16% match is.
Right, thank you, nothing else.
All right, thank you, Councilor Luba.
It's, it's in the current, not your two.
Okay. That's my thought.
Okay.
Are there any other questions from council members?
Is that, yes, sorry, does that mean we're going to hold off on any repair or improvements until we find out if we get this grant?
Well, there, there could be, look, there's, we had in something fall there the other day. I believe Scott and his crew have gone up there to take care of the weeds. They can't, obviously can't prepare the, the gash that goes right through there.
Right.
But the weeds certainly make it slippery, and they were, I believe they did took care of it.
Okay.
That's the best we can do.
Right, but we have $82,000 allocated in the current, this year's capital improvement plan for crack repair. Correct. Are we going to hold off on any of that activity until we find out if we get this grant? Because we change our approach if we have more money?
That's accurate, correct.
Okay. And so, when are we going to find out if we get the grant, you know?
May I?
Yeah.
So I don't know if we want to join in. Just to clarify, this grant requires a match portion from the town.
Right.
So the town's vision for this, after a small discussion, is that we use the allocated funds, 82,000, which will cover the repairs already planned for at the six courts at, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, the high school.
Right. Those are, and those are municipal funds.
Right.
We're allowed to use them and they will serve as match. We can proceed, okay, with repairs, with the resurfacing of those tents, not the tents, the tennis courts, maybe a little bit. The $500,000 grant application that we're asking council for permission to proceed with is for the tearing up, replacing of the asphalt pad at the Crandall Park. That was also have cracks, but there's also a foundation issue. So to leverage municipal funds, 82,000, we're going to use that project and the funds already set aside for that as our match portion to say to OPM, look, this is a community-wide effort. This is what we've done, this is our skin in the game. We're asking you for 500,000 more to actually tear up those pads, replace them, reline them, and make them useful again.
Okay. And is work on the Crandall Park Tennis Court part of our five-year plan for future year?
They are, they're in the, if I, I looked at the capital budget correctly, they are also in the 23, 24, and maybe 24, 25 for 300,000.
Okay.
But in a recent estimate done by the Parks and Recreation, I'm sorry, Recreation Department.
Yeah.
It is, and in, it is a, in today's dollars, it's more like a half a million dollar project.
Okay.
So recent numbers.
All right.
Indicate, obviously, that that cost will go up, which is where we are, we, after meeting, we thought that would be the best suitable project for the maximum dollar value.
Sure, okay. So that's great news, so that's, if we get this grant, we will also be able to take something off our capital plans as being paid for in a different, hopefully, different way, hopefully.
If they fund it all and they grant it all.
Fingers crossed.
Thank you.
And do we know when we're going to, I'm sorry, to interrupt you, do we know when we hear about this grant?
Yes, the applications are due August 15th. The notice from OPM is, as you know, is planned announcement for September 15th.
So by, by the end of the year.
I think that's fair, I, I think they're aiming for that time, but as we know, there's always a delay. So that's, that's what we're going with after internal discussions and meeting with the previous and current administration.
Great, thank you, of course.
Are there any questions from council members? All right. Seeing that, I entertain a motion to approve the resolution as outlined in 8.2.
So moved.
By councillor Luba.
Second.
Second by councillor Murray. Seeing no further discussion, we'll do a roll call vote, councillor Murray.
Hi.
Vice Chair Regan.
Hi.
Councilor Luba.
Hi.
Senator Yudichak.
Hi.
And I, so that is unanimous, thank you, everyone. So we'll move on to 8.3, which is a consideration of a resolution to declare various equipment in this repair obsolete. But it was a very lengthy sheet, and I know, I think the Board of Ed approved it June 22nd to list all those items as obsolete, so they're just looking for approval at that point. So are there any questions from council members? Yeah. Councilor Luba.
Thank you. Yeah, and I know that every year we go through this about declaring the items obsolete. And just to refresh my recollection, what is it that we do with there? Is this something that's then, you know, just thrown out? Or is it going into the, I guess, military term to be dermo, where you're putting it into storage? And then it's going to sell it off or anything like that? I mean, what is it that's going to be done to these items?
I think so, I should, I'll let, I'll let Brian answer if you're able to. So I actually spoke with Walt about this this week, he was in the office. He said everything in that list is of no value and it's been stripped. So if there's anything hard drives, anything they can pull out of computers, he does. And they, they strip everything down as best they can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Luba, are there any other questions from council members? All right, seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve the resolutions outlined in 8.3.
So moved.
So by councillor Murray, is there a second? It may have been, it may have been two months, a second. Tammy, Colleen will give you a chance to second.
A second. I was on mute, I was like yelling, I'll second, but whatever.
No worries, all right. Seeing no further discussion, we'll do a roll call vote, councillor Murray.
Hi.
Vice Chair Regan.
Hi.
Councilor Luba.
Hi.
Councilman Yudichak.
Hi.
Senator Uchio.
Hi.
And I, so that is unanimous. Moving right along here to 8.4. Sorry, my screen's buffering for a second. Consideration and action on approving the Administrative Secretary to Human Services position for the Senior Center. And I believe I saw Kim is on as well on Zoom to speak for the Senior Center, so welcome, Kim. So I think as people know, we did pass, oh, and Bev is here for Human Services as well. But obviously, this is passed in the budget, so I think the position starts in April of next year. Now, was it pushed? Yeah, thank you for the clarification. I don't know, Brian or Bev or Kim, if you want to add any additional information to the council, I'll pass to Bev.
And I, I also had, so we had to change the current administrative, administrative job description. It didn't really, the one we had to really match the duties at the Senior Center. So that'd be assisting Kim with daily activities, maybe even helping with future grants, setting up programs, helping with the newsletter, doing the website, you know, greeting people as they come in, setting up programs, initiating new programs as well. Anything else, Kim, that?
Just keep, I'm keeping track of social media for us to, and, and just help as, as we need. That pretty much covers it.
Thank you, Kim, thank you, Bev.
Oh, and answer phones, answer phones.
Yeah, there's, I think when we talk about bringing the budget cycle, they're kind of the triage position for him. Are there any questions from council members? All right, seeing none.
Hey, just, Steve, can I just make a comment? Sorry, I'm, I'm just very excited that we're at, we're able to add this much-needed position to this department. So I'm very excited to see this is on the agenda.
I agree, thank you. Other questions or comments from councillors? Seeing that, I entertain a motion to approve the resolution outlined in 8.4.
So moved.
There a second?
A second.
My councillor Uchio. We have a discussion, do a roll call vote, councillor Murray.
Hi.
Vice Chair Regan.
Hi.
Luba.
Hi.
Councilman Yudichak.
Hi.
Senator Uchio.
Hi.
And I, so that is unanimous, we are on to 8.5, which is consideration and action on a resolution appointing town manager Brian Foley to the Board of Directors of East Town Health Districts to fulfill the term of service through May of 2024. So pretty straightforward, are there any questions from council members?
I don't know.
Seeing that, I entertain a motion to approve the resolution outlined in 8.5.
So moved. I beat him to it, all right.
You can second, councillor.
I'll second.
All right, thank you. Seeing no further discussion, we'll do a roll call vote, councillor Murray.
Hi.
Vice Chair Regan.
Hi.
Councilor Luba.
Hi.
Councilman Yudichak.
Hi.
Senator Uchio.
Hi.
And I, so that is unanimous. All right, and then 8.6, which is a consideration of a resolution authorized Brian Foley, town manager, to execute an M O A for the state of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection for participation in the Homeland Security Grant Program. At the language in resolution 21-45, updating the town name of the same, to reflect Brian J. Foley's appointment. Is pretty straightforward as well, is there any discussion with council members?
I mean, you don't know anything about that department, you're going to.
No.
Get scratched for it, huh?
Uh, thank you, councillor, first off, I'm familiarized myself.
So moved.
Motion made by, I think councillor Luba, to approve the resolution outlined in 8.6, is there a second?
A second.
I can do my councillor Yudichak. Seeing no further discussion, we'll do a roll call vote, councillor Murray.
Hi.
Vice Chair Regan.
Hi.
Councilor Luba.
Hi.
Councilman Yudichak.
Hi.
Senator Uchio.
Hi.
And I as well, so that is unanimous. So we are now on to 8.7, which we have several appointments and reappointments. So I would entertain a motion to approve those appointments outlined in 8.7A through 8.7F.
I'll make that motion.
So there a second?
A second.
Second by councillor Murray. You know, discussion, all those in favor, roll call.
I can just, no, thank you, Mr. Luba. You know, we're all screened by Councilman Khan and I, that we find that they're all meet the requirements, that we're glad to see that there are some, that are reappointments. But again, that we're very fortunate to have people that are interested in filling in these vacancies. And we always encourage anyone who's out there who wants to get involved, please submit your names. And again, I appreciate the, the town staff, Megan and everyone who keeps Sam and I, Sammy and I on top of these where it's, with all the emails that we get sent, sometimes these, these emails for applications get buried. And so, we truly appreciate everybody keeping us on top of it, reminding me to check my mail.
No problem, councillor Luba, thank you. All right. No further discussion, we'll do a roll call vote, councillor Murray.
Hi.
Vice Chair Regan.
Hi.
Councilor Luba.
Hi.
Councilman Yudichak.
Hi.
Senator Uchio.
Hi.
I have a unanimous, moving on to nine, there is no old business, so I don't, I reported the town manager, so thoughts over to Brian.
Thank you, y'all.
Thank you. Um, y'all, everyone here has a a copy of the report and some other stuff I'd like to uh, dig into a little bit. Uh, first, I want to thank the women and men of Talon Fire Department, the volunteer, Talon Volunteer Fire Department. For today, I went to the fire on scene. Um, there was a detached garage that caught fire and the house began to uh, become involved. Uh, thanks to Chief Bytel and the staff and getting water there quickly and then the surrounding towns. Twenty thousand gallons of water was there relatively quickly, watching last night of a friend lose a home in Watertown last night because they couldn't get water there. Uh, I'm very thankful again for the women and men of the fire department for what they did in Wellington and Crystal Lake. As also on public safety, uh, we had a great meeting today with Eversource. And planning for um, storms, uh, power outages and the and the like, and how we're going to handle it. And then a couple of uh, meetings moving forward to include a view of their operation dispatch center here in Talon, and also meet with them as they're one of our largest employers. Had a great uh, meeting with Director Raisico over at T N regarding uh, dispatching nine-one-one services, uh, radio services and some other issues in town. As I'm getting through most of my meetings with direct reports, I am uh, pleasantly surprised at the efforts that uh, the staff all pitches in and goes above and beyond uh, all of that, every single person I've met. That being said, we also had a meeting with the Seriously Delinquent Tax um, Commission or group today or this week. Uh, we went over some um, delinquent tax issues and that are going to go to sale. Uh, and that that went well also. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Brian. I just wanted to add, I want to echo some of the comments in the Human Services Report, thanking Megan for all their work in the town manager's office. Going very difficult time and wish them well as they forward in their career. So, but also glad to see some of the vacancies and the assessor's office and the uh, human services office get filled pretty quickly. So hopefully the town manager position or the town manager assistant position will fill pretty quickly too. So, but that's it. Are there any questions from council members about the town manager report?
I want to know about this possible.
There's a possible meeting coming up. If you look in the uh, the uh, minutes there, that that report, I believe the library has a meeting on, and I actually scheduled to attend that. For personal reasons. We don't need.
Sounds good. Awesome. Well, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. There's no other questions from council members. We'll move on to the chairperson's report. Uh, we did do a new location for the chair hour last week in the library. Uh, no takers, I think in part due to the holiday week, but going forward, there'll be uh, some more activity and we'll try to get that posted ahead of time. Going forward. Did I skip eleven? I did, actually. So let me jump back a little bit, get ahead of myself here. Item eleven, adoption of minutes. So we have eleven point one through eleven point four, which is the June first, June ninth, June fourteenth and twenty-ninth minutes. So I entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Discussion. All in favor, Council Murray.
Hi.
Vice Chair Regan.
Hi.
Council Luba.
Hi.
Councilman Utecheck.
Hi.
Up for Minuccio.
Hi.
And I as well, says unanimous. Apologies for skipping. So we'll go to twelve, which is correspondence to council. That's a word.
Oh, yes. We had eleven emails that came in um, between June fifteenth and July twelfth. Uh, one regarding the library. One regarding electric school buses. Two regarding sidewalks on the green. One regarding electric vehicle charging stations. One regarding board and commission vacancies. One about pedestrian crosswalks on the green, two regarding the Veterans Memorial. One regarding electric vehicles and one about tennis courts.
Thank you, Council Murray. All right, now moving on to item thirteen, chairs report. So other than the change in location for the chair hour, did receive a communication from Andy Pell, Chair of the P D C. They are looking to do a follow-up on the the portable housing trust. They had some communications about the uh, one-size-fits-all, doesn't really fit. So they're looking at the sliding ratio. So they'd like to meet with us again to do a follow-up at some point in the near future. And Tom Andrew did that email so we can go over some of the history of what we've had meetings on in the past and try and get that set up in a couple of months. So that is it for me at this point. Chairs report. So item fourteen is communication and petitions from council members. Council Luba.
Uh, well, uh, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chair, that uh, one of the things uh, that I was going to bring up, well, that I am bringing up now, um, and I was going to pose in an email before this meeting um, is over the past several weeks and over the past several terms, we've had a lot of discussion about the use of the town green, how the town green is being used, what it, what it could be used for, everything else like that. Um, that we had very spirited discussion about the sidewalks that we've gone through uh, funding for various projects like uh, the jailhouse rehab and other things like that. Um, and what I'm petitioning and what my request is, is that uh, we as a, as a council, town council call in other people, other groups as well, to really get a solid plan for what we're going to do with the town. I mean, there, we're doing a lot of it piecemeal. We are doing repairs on certain things, and we're doing repairs on the sidewalk, looking at the repairs for sidewalks, looking at a few different things uh, for as far as adopting new rules and regulations and encouraging people to use the town green as far as for like the farmer's market and other things. But I don't see a really cohesive plan as far as what we could do. And I know that we had um, Councilwoman Nuccio speak about the P C C and about uh, what's going on with the P C C and everything else like that. Plans that we have for there. And there's a lot of other groups that are involved with the use of it, but I don't see like a a really solid game plan for development. Things that we could do that we could really use it for. Uh, every day that uh, when I go for a walk uh, during lunch around working killing week, they have a town green about the same size that we have, which is amazing because it doesn't quite have the same type of history that we have around there. But the, what they do, every, there's something going on there every week. They have a gazebo in the middle, they have it, and it's used by people all the time. And I know that that's really what we want. We want the town green to be able to use. And it has things happen there because it is, it's a great thing um, to have on the green and to have as part of the town. But I think it's underutilized. And that one of the thing, one of the comments that stuck with me during our discussions uh, when we were talking about sidewalks uh, coming from the historical commission is that there's uh, that they want to keep their historical value because that's something that draws people to town. I agree with that, but I think there's so much more that we could be doing that could really get people more involved with the town and get more people down downtown there so that they can see some of the things that are going on. And uh, so that's why petition is to really get groups together, get the P C C together, get economic development. Uh, the historical district, the uh, commissioner of people with disabilities. Everybody to go and really sit down and formulate a game or form a subcommittee of the groups to really come up with a proposal because it's something that I think is great. It's just underutilized. All it is right now is a big open space in the middle of town, which we use maybe, you know, once a month for things, one, you know, until the, until the farmer's market comes here. Maybe once uh, every, every season for something. We could be doing so much more. Um, you know, I won't go off on the whole thing about developing positive pavilion or something on the down the far end. Because, you know, then that opens up a whole different catalog. But at least being able have some kind of development plan, I think is something that would be ideal. And I've gone more, longer than I wanted to on this, but it's something that I really think that um, we want to build on this town's legacy. And I think that's something we could really do is use that green the way that it used to be, which was bringing everybody together in town to share news, to hear about what's going on and really use it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Council Luba. So I mean, just to summarize, I think the two points I'm really getting from it is a strategic plan for the green as well as kind of a vision statement page that could cohesively bring all those bodies together, say, this is what our green is about, this is how you can use it and try and promote it. So it's used more regularly.
Sure. I'm glad that you understood what I'm talking about.
Good. Are there any uh, Councilman Ute?
Yes, thank you very much. Um, so we had gotten a letter from a couple of people regarding um, the Veterans Commission and coming up with a memorial for our vets. Um, you know, I'm I'm in a lot of towns. I see a lot of memorials. And I think um, this is something that we should also consider. I know at one point Lisa had a meeting on our upcoming agendas to have the Veterans Commission come um, and kind of talk about that. But uh, in Wellington, they're doing a five O C three or five oh three C, and people are donating money to raise for um, uh, a whole new area for them for veterans' recognition. And I think that it's about time that we sit down and start talking about what we want to do, what we would like to see from a veterans' uh, recognition out on the green. Funny enough, here we go, green part two there with blue. Um, I think a good usage of part of the green would be to recognize our military. So I'd like to just ensure that we get that on an upcoming meeting and um, that we can kind of talk about what we would like to see from a vision for a veteran's memorial besides what we currently have in in town hall right now.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Ute. And I believe we were intending them to be on, I think, the first meeting in August, and not the second meeting in August to have Karen and and the Veterans Recognition Commission here to kind of formally present. Uh, I think their thoughts both at Crandall's and any updates to the green, changing the bushes and making, maybe expanding on that space. Are there other communications from council members or petitions?
Yeah.
Council Murray.
Um, I also uh, like Tammy wanted to highlight one of the communications that came into us uh, from um, Bob Rubino about crosswalks on the green and his rather pragmatic uh, idea that that he brought back from Washington State about pedestrian cross crossing flag. I don't know if that's the way to go, uh, but uh, I think see if we're, especially as we talk about more usage of the green, pedestrian safety is certainly something that needs to be part of that consideration. So I guess I'm seeing as to to ask that be included as part of the consideration, in- including with the sidewalks as well. You might think that's part of the the puzzle.
It's a good thing Chief Bytel is here, we can repurpose, you know, the conversation. Green.
We give it all to you.
Yeah. Are there any other questions or additions from council members? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item fifteen, which is public list participation. Uh, any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council with a agreement limit. If you were online, you can get the star nine button or raise hand function, or if you were in the audience, you can push the table and again, your name and address. Going once.
I don't.
No. I think Councilman Ute again is just still from before.
Oh, yeah, no, that's just up from before. Ignore me. Lower my hand. Thank you.
Okay. You know, public, oh.
Well. Yeah, still doing.
We're tired. And that wasn't listening at times. And I got here a little late.
No worries.
Uh, I wanted to speak in favor of spending even more money on a fire truck and a lot more, well, not more, a lot more. But uh, I spoke to both Chief Bytel and to the uh, our uh, public works. And they had considered electric vehicles, and they're like four times the price. So that's out for now. Uh, and and there is uh, an effort to look into our dual battery system, all um, you know, all vehicles that are left to idle for any length of time should at least have the option of turning off the ignition and not ready to starting that. This is a feature available on pickup trucks for the last fifty years, just as a standard factory option. Uh, nothing, nothing very dodgy about it. But we can go that far. And we're going to need some charging ports uh, probably before we get electric town vehicles. Uh, and I've heard that there's uh, there's eighty thousand dollars, and so we have to find a cheaper way to do that. I don't think companies would spend that much on their charging port outside the their high school. I think that's they just have a, you know, conduit and the same kind of thing that you might have at home for a thousand-dollar unit. And it's just tied into the electricals of the building. Uh, we also, before any emergency vehicle gets in, we should modify our solar uh, panel areas so that they could provide power in in the event of a grid failure. The grid is down for a week. Uh, none of our emergency people are going to want to be depending on electricity. Uh, now, of course, we can't get gas either when the grid is down, but easily, you know, you have to go to the local gas station with the generator, set the power up there. Their whole, their whole site. Uh, but it it is the point of contention. We have one and a half uh, tell me, are the solar panels as the industrial part of?
Don't know if we have solar at the industrial park. There's over on River Road. That's solar array. And that's, I think, at the, I don't know, it was like a twenty-year lease, I think. I don't know how it would be mature to that point yet. I think there's another five or ten years left on that lease.
I'd like to know what company put it in. So I could ask them what it would cost to be able to feed power when the grid is down.
Okay.
All the equipment is made not to do that. But to use it locally is allowed under all the rules, whether the equipment can be modified cheaply or whether it's expensive. Some equipment comes with it built in as a feature. The the two inverters I have have that as a built-in feature.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Julie. So we're kind of at the three-minute, if you're able to some way. Sorry, apologize. And then we just need your bad dressing for the record for the click.
Here, the what?
Your uh, your address for the record.
Oh, uh, so it's one ninety. One ninety-two Goose Lane.
And will you email us frequently? So I'll make sure we can get an answer back to you about the history of the solar array and we'll we'll get your information that you that you requested, but it's in, I have it written down for you.
And and I've heard that apparently you have some meetings about um, electric vehicles and chargers. And I didn't, you know, if I didn't know about some of the results.
Okay. Will do. Thank you, Phil. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else from?
Or an inflation has pushed things up enough, you need more money.
Yes. No problem. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn at seven forty-nine P M.
So moved.
So we, by Council Murray, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Luba. All right, we'll do a roll call vote, Council Murray.
Hi.
Vice Chair Regan.
Hi.
Council Luba.
Hi.
Councilman Ute.
Hi. Hi.
And I said unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.